So I would initiate the meeting by asking select board members present to announce themselves.
Ed Lane here, Dave Roach here.
Mary Beth Mitz here.
Okay, that's all I see. Let me see if on my screen I see that CTSB is here and recording the meeting. I also see that Clarence Fanto is here recording the meeting. Bear with me folks, Chris is gonna have to help me through this because my agenda is on the phone that I'm speaking on. Having announced us and having announced those who are recording the meeting, I would like to open it up for anybody who is here to make public comment.
And folks wanna indicate either in the chat or if they wanna raise their hand, I can attempt to see you.
Okay, it appears to be none. I feel, go ahead Ed.
We just need to accept the minutes of March 10th.
Yep, that's what I was just gonna say is Ed, would you like to make a motion for the minutes?
Just make a motion, we accept the minutes of March 10.
Second.
Any comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, minutes accepted. Chris, at this point, could you help me by reading the consent agenda?
Certainly. So we have three items on the consent agenda. The EMS director Larry Morris is seeking your approval to accept the donation to the ambulance EMS department. Fire chief Chris O'Brien is seeking your approval to accept donation to the fire department. And the affordable housing committee is seeking your permission to insert a flyer into the next tax or water bill that will not raise the the cost of mailing of said bills in accordance with statute.
Mary Beth doesn't, can I put a hold on that one?
Sure.
Do we wanna move, Mr. Chair, might be appropriate to accept moving all the all the consent agenda items except for the held item?
Yes, Ed, I believe you held the last one, so could I have a moment to accept the consent agenda subject to the hold on the third item?
Make a motion to accept the agenda, the consent agenda except for the the one on hold.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so moved, and now we have before us the third item on the consent agenda.
Right, the Affordable Housing Trust is seeking permission to insert a flyer into the next tax or water bill. What we're trying to do is to apply for community development block grant funds from the Department of Housing and Community Development for owner occupied housing rehab. What we would like to do is insert a flyer that will be printed on the front and the back. On the front will be information stating, you know, there's going to be a program if we win this award for people who own their homes if they need to make health and safety improvements to their home that could be roof improvements, foundation improvements, weatherization improvements, window improvements. We will outline those briefly as the types of eligible activities. We'll provide a spreadsheet of the income qualifications that each household will need by household size. And on the flip side, we'll have more information about the program and you know how it will serve Lennox residents and contact information at the town to get on a waiting list to participate in this program. It will not guarantee participation in the program, but it will help the town to build a waiting list so that when we submit an application for this year's funding round, we will be, we will have a more competitive application. We will have, we will have a waiting list of people showing that the town has significant need for this money, and that's what this is for. Any questions?
I've got one, oh, I'm sorry, Ed, do you wanna go first?
Go ahead, if yours is probably, go ahead, go ahead.
I'd suggest the tax bill because there are a lot of people out there who still have wells and don't, don't, won't be getting the the questionnaire if you put it in a water bill. So I'd say, see if you can work it out with the, with the tax bills.
Good suggestion.
I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, one of the, one of the big things that we struggle with is communication and communicating with the public because you know, who reads the website sometimes and so on and so forth. And I think this is a great tool for getting information out there. And and I'd endorse it for whether it's water and sewer bills or tax bills or whenever we send a correspondence out, if we can do it, what we used to call in post office days, a marriage mailing, where you, you know, stick a flyer in there, keep it under the weight so it doesn't cost more, but at least it, information gets out there. So you know, it just piggybacks along with the, you know, the notice that was sent or the bill that was sent or whatever it is. But we do struggle at getting information out to the public.
Great, yeah, and that's what we're trying to do. We, we made this application last year and there were some other communities, Stockbridge and Dalton won this award last year, but they had a more robust waiting list. Our waiting list was not quite as robust, so we, we struggled to make contact with people, so we think that this will really help. So it would be great to get your approval to do this because it will help, you know, it will help everybody in town and it'll just make all the houses look better that participate.
Thank you. To piggyback on what both Ed and Dave said, we, we just desperately wanna get the communication out and you might consider as additional means, possibly speaking with the school, Mike Knibl, maybe he would like have a distribution, maybe Loeb's would have a distribution, you know, things like that so that people get it. I know, know one single avenue that communicates to everybody in town except for the police chiefs or the fire chiefs, emergency, like, you know, system. And, you know, the, the better we can get this out there, the better.
That's a good suggestion, thank you for that.
And Mary Ellen, if I may, excuse me, Mr. Chair, if I may, I believe Mr. Archie entered the meeting at 7:13 for the, for the minutes. Warren, is that you?
That's right.
All right, great.
Excuse me, also the chamber, we have with our weekly e-blast, I mean, I think we're going out to 5,000 people in town, you know, in and around town, so we can use our e-blast as well if you want.
Great, thank you, that would
You know, just like, have a town section, just like town announcement, we can do that.
Excellent, thank you. Great.
Jen, not to wander too off topic here, but is that something that you could make? I mean, when, when there are random communications to me from vendors or from people that want my attention, I pay a little bit of attention to them, but when I know that it's gonna happen like every Friday, you know, they, they tend to like, for whatever reason, get my attention just somewhat more. And I don't know if you have content enough to support that, but in my mind, as just a suggestion, you know, regularity would, would make a big deal to me.
You wanna, you wanna be on the communication or you want us to have a town box in our e-blast every week? I mean, we can do that easily.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that question perfectly, but yeah, I, I, I think what you said is like if there's a, if there's a weekly e-blast about the town, I, I think that would be great.
Yeah, okay, yeah, let's, who would I talk to about that? Mary Ellen, about getting the information, Gwen? Just to make sure we have
Yeah, Jen, why don't, why don't you and I make a point to talk tomorrow and we can figure out what the, what, I, I think that's, that's, that's an intriguing idea and I'd love to pursue that line of thinking further, so.
Okay, great.
Thank you all for your outstanding suggestions. Four or five heads are always better than one. So do we need to bring this up, do I need to make a motion to provide permission for this flyer insertion?
Does it need a motion or can that just be a town manager's call and doing something like this? So we're not doing this every time.
The, the statute calls for the selectmen to, to approve on an individual basis. I mean, it can happen by consent. We just happened to have had some, some meaningful discussion about it tonight, which, which was good, but I, but I do think we need a motion, yeah.
Okay, let's get it done. Can I get a motion for this wonderful idea, please?
I'd make a motion that the Affordable Housing Trust be able to insert a flyer in the next tax bill for the owner occupied housing rehab program.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. And, yes. Thank you, Mary Beth. I'm going to need Chris to lead me on here again.
Sure. So, Mr. Chair, the agenda, the next item on the agenda is the Chamber of Commerce budget. So we have Jennifer Nocht from the, from the chamber here, ready to, to discuss the revised budget proposal.
Thank you everyone for letting me come back and, you know, further the, the original proposal. After having conversations with various select board members and Chris and working with members of the finance committee, I reconstructed a budget that gave you more of the full picture because it, I think that, you know, after talking with David and Ed, they felt like they just, you know, seeing things in a vacuum, it just, it didn't, it, they just wanted to see more of a full picture. And as I delved into doing this budget, I realized that it was really hard to just pull out and yeah, pull, thank you Chris, pull out certain, what the town contribution was related to certain line items. So what I, what I've done here is given you a total cost of, total line item costs of, for the, for the whole, excuse me, chamber. Then I broke it down into the events, which is where, you know, what I was asking for the 20, for the $25,000 increase. Then I have also included a line that is just, you know, remaining, remaining at the same level with a 3% increase. And basically what this shows is that if we remain at the 3% increase, the expanded events are gonna have to be pulled, I won't be able to expand on the events. I may still be able to do the spring art walk, but I, I'll have to go, I still have to go back and really, you know, go, go through this with a fine tooth comb because this is, you know, done just in a, just a few days. And I just really added everything in the last couple of days, but but I, I do, and then also some of the, some of the marketing dollars would be pulled back in, in terms of, in terms of PR and, you know, which was very successful last, last year, so I really would, would hate to pull back on that. But I hope that with this new budget, it, it gives a little more explanation that, you know, the explanation everyone was looking for. And, you know, hopefully, you know, we can, we can figure out a way that we can all, you know, we can work towards this going forward, at least to the, to the original ask of $25,000. So are there any questions, anything else I can clarify, anything?
I'll jump in if nobody else is. You know, Jen, I think you did a fantastic job on this from our conversation the other day. Obviously put a lot of work and effort into it to get, get it to this point and it's a good job, very good job. I, you know, I, I'm, I'm almost, now I, here, I don't know how we can go about this, but I don't mind seeing an increase in this budget. I know you guys are gonna be astounded I'm saying that, but it's, it's true. I think it's important that we, you know, fund the chamber the way we should fund the chamber to have events that come into town. I feel that we're, you know, we're the biggest stakeholder in the chamber, actually. We're probably at 50% or whatever of the chamber budget and I, there's two things that I feel that we need. A, we need a lot more communication between everybody because I don't think that's been happening the way it should be happening. And we should at least monthly or whatever have Jen come in and, you know, bring us up to speed on everything else. And the other thing I'd like to see is one of the board of selectmen be on the executive board of the chamber. And to make, you know, to see these, see what's actually happening there and, and help make calls because, and actually Jennifer, I think that would probably alleviate your work a lot if you had somebody that was right there that could help you with this type of thing. And, you know, as the year comes along, I know you, you don't, you don't really, it's hard to plan what you're gonna do for the winter event. But if we had money somehow set aside in the budget to, if all of a sudden it's a good winter and we can put something together and, and, you know, it costs some money, okay. If it's raining and pouring at 60 degrees in December, well, ain't a good idea. So those are the things, I'd like to be able to react a little bit quickly, so I don't mind if we bump this budget up actually a little bit, but we had a lot of input from the select board as the year goes on.
I, I'm totally open to that. I mean, we talked about Ed, you know, having, setting up like a monthly coffee and David and I talked about this too and just, you know, it's two, you know, maxes out, I guess, at two select board members that can come, but just to fill you in, but I mean, I, I, Mary Beth and I have worked very closely and we work on a lot of projects that are through the cultural district. So she's really been, she's really guided me quite a bit and, and, you know, but, but I, but I, you know, everybody's in different places and, you know, no one's meeting in person, so I understand that, you know, everybody needs to hear from me exactly, you know, what's the reasoning behind a, an event or, you know, whatever the program is and, and be able just to ask questions like standing, sitting right in front of me basically. So I, I hear you and I am totally on board with that. I, I, you know. So.
So I, hopefully you folks can hear me. I, I'd like to sort of jump on Ed's comments. I agree with virtually all of his comments, which is not rare. What I wrestle with is, in general, when you look at a chamber for a regular town, that chamber is usually funded fully by the businesses that it supports. And then that chamber goes about supporting those businesses, whether they be restaurants, retail shops, what have you, and proceeds accordingly. We are sitting here in this situation today where the chamber, whose mission is to try to support the businesses in town, is asking the town for money. Now, it's not in any way, case, shape or form that the town doesn't support our local businesses, but we may have a greater agenda. And you've heard me say it, Jen. My agenda is to attract people to come to live in Lennox. And I don't see that much in your programming that's directed at that. I see a lot of programming that wants people to come have dinner at Zink or come shop at X and Y store. And those are beneficial to the town in many ways. It brings foot traffic, it brings taxes, et cetera. But my, and I'll say my because I have not asked my fellow select board members, greater agenda is to attract people to Lennox as a place to live, as a place to be, as a place to recreate, as a place to send their kids to school. And I have a tiny bit of disconnect when I see your budget all directed towards marketing and not much of your budget directed towards, hey folks, Lennox is a great place to be, come live here. Look at our schools. We have top schools in the, in, in, in the state. Come live here. Look at our recreational opportunities. They're fantastic. And so, to the extent that we can continue to merge those things to be the same goal, I'm on board. I don't think we've gotten there yet. But I just wanna keep pointing out that that's what I would like to see. Thank you.
I might.
Please.
So Jennifer, you can respond to both of us in a minute, okay? Once, once the town contribution becomes about half the budget, I think we're more partners than we are contributors. So I, I think that we need to be treated like, like a partner and as Ed said, perhaps have, well, definitely have better communication, but also perhaps some representation. I, I think you've got a tough year ahead. I think you really do. I mean, we're just, we're not even out of COVID yet, but, but maybe there's some light at the end of the tunnel. I know that the, the contributions that come from businesses this year are gonna be tough. I mean, that, what don't you pay after you've come off a year of total losses? And that's what most of our businesses have been experiencing. So, you know, what you anticipate perhaps in revenue as far as memberships go might be a little less than what you had hoped. And I think that we need to talk about that because I think that the town owes something to the businesses to help them get back on their feet. So I don't think we're done with this discussion yet, but I'm, you know, I'm certainly in favor of your request going forward from this point, but I think we need to talk more a little bit about the future. Neil's points are well taken. I have a little problem in that I, you know, keep an eye on the available housing in town and for a family of four moving in, looking for a reasonably priced house, that's, that's a difficult task. I love, I'd love to market the town, I really do, but I'd like to see more product available to them when, if, if they wanted to relocate here. So I'm not certainly in agreement with them, but I wanna have a discussion about the availability of of homes and, or lots or whatever they're, they're looking for. So I think you've got, you know, I've been through five directors in 10 years and, on the, on the chamber, you know, for some reason I have a lot of confidence in your, your ability to lead this organization through these difficult times. But you, but as I go back to my opening remarks saying, you're not alone. I mean, consider us because we are contributing about half of what you need. Consider us partners, resource, and come back to us when you hit, hit a rough patch. Don't try to go it alone. And if we can get some representation on your board, if we can get some, some more, some better communications as Ed suggested, all in favor of it. Totally all in favor of it.
Right.
That's, those are my comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, David.
If I may, we're, we're, we're gonna be experiencing, as David mentioned, you know, another rough summer, but thankfully with the passage of the American Recovery Plan, there will be funds flowing to municipalities to help specifically with residents and businesses affected by COVID-19. And I think that this chamber request is going to fall solidly in that basket. So I think that we will be able to, you know, make this contribution this year, at least this year, with some of those funds, or at least a portion of, a portion of those funds. Because clearly, you know, you've lost businesses within the town center. You know, people have closed their doors, restaurants have closed their doors, so that, there will be funds available for that and we're very lucky that the federal government is providing that this year. I also echo Dave's sentiment about, it's a little difficult to have the discussion about marketing to bring families here when there are only six homes on the market in Lennox right now. The market is very tight. There are people trying to move into town, can't find available housing stock to look at, given the size of their families or, you know, given where they'd like to locate. So, so we, we have a, we have a supply and demand problem right now. And again, I think that's another robust discussion for another time. But I, I like what you've laid out. I, I think we can do it this year based on the American Recovery Plan money we're gonna be receiving. And so I would endorse this. I agree with Dave that, you know, we should have some more representation on your executive committee. And I'm sure between Dave and I, we could provide that representation.
Great. Um, so just, yeah, I mean, just to echo what David and Mary Beth said. Yeah, we had, you know, we were moving towards my original plan, you know, that's always the goal is to bring people to move to Lennox. That's always like the overarching goal, but we sort of slowed the brakes on it because of the last couple of meetings, we had said that there was an issue with, with housing. So, but I will say that the, the, the money that we spent last year on that PR program, the PR initiative that reached over 292 million impressions, a lot of those features were about Lennox as a town and what a great place and, you know, it has it all and, you know, I don't know if you've been able to sift through, you know, the, the 16, 17 the features, but I mean, a lot of, a lot of them covered that. So, but yeah, and I also think that these events, a lot of these events and the ones that, you know, are, are, are more community events. I mean, the Halloween and ghost hunt, I mean, that's a community event. Lennox Winterland, I mean, that's, that's really to, to, you know, for, for residents, you know, that's not so much as a, as a pull for tourism. I mean, I really like, I, you know, we, I don't do, I do very little marketing, you know, in the, in the heart of the summer because I don't really need to because Tanglewood and Shakespeare and Company and all these other people are doing it. What I'm doing at that point is supporting the tourists that come in in terms of just at the visitor center and giving them the guide, which is one thing that's suffering, you know, this year in terms of, I'm, I'm, you know, not seeing as much ad revenue for the guide where typically the tool agency that always bought the back page has bought the back page for 10 years, they're not taking the back page. And, you know, that's, that's a big loss. You know, I think $2,300 of revenue towards, towards the guide. And we can't not print the guide because we're still gonna have visitors here and, and that, you know, people have to, they have to come here and visit first before they decide if they wanna come back and, you know, eventually become residents. And I, I will say that from what I know from the other Berkshire chambers, they, all of them receive money from their town to, that supports the chamber. I mean, I thought, you know, typically it's like between 15 and 25% of the tourism tax that they, that does come in. So I think we're at, you know, something a little less than 5% at this point. So, but we have a, you know, we, we generate a greater amount of tax dollars, so. But anyway.
The denominator is much higher, right?
Yeah, right, right. So, but I mean, I, I hear, you know, like I said, I hear what you're saying and yeah, I, you know, I would love to have, I know I have the support of the select board, but I'd love to have more feedback from the select board throughout the, you know, throughout the year and, and, you know, so nobody's feeling ambushed at any time or just like, what is this? So, yeah, so anyway, that's, that's where we are.
Well, Jen, thank you again for your presentation, your very well thought out remarks. To answer several comments that were made, yes, Mary Beth, yes, David? To answer several comments that were made, yes, uh, Mary Beth, yes, David. We have to have housing stock to be able to go out there and say, here's places to live. But anecdotally, I'll tell you that I know of three in the last month, less than a month, new Lennox residents. That did not, um. Let me just say that we're not price sensitive to the market. Now, that's not always going to be the case, of course. But Lennox is in high demand. In my speaking with realtors right now, turnover for a new Lennox listing is something like less than seven days.
Right.
And, and, and the inventory is minute. Now, I am not in any way saying that we shouldn't increase or find a way. I think it's our job, it's incumbent on us as a board to find a way to increase stock. At what I'll call affordable levels. I don't mean affordable housing by the technical term. I mean affordable levels. Okay. I can't stand it when I talk to business leaders in town, and I probably shouldn't name them here. Uh, and, and, you know, I'll just leave it at that, whose sons and daughters want to return to town. And feel they can't afford to. I'm talking about market or housing stock in the two hundred to four hundred thousand dollar range, which I feel we lack in Lennox. But is there available, should we decide to renovate and or repair dilapidated. Unused stock right now. And, you know, it's a big task. I'm not saying it's easy. But I would like more than nothing for sons and daughters of folks that grew up in Lennox. To be able to return to Lennox and live here and be participants in this town.
Bravo.
Yes, agreed.
I think that's one of the most important things that we could possibly do as a board going forward over the next several years.
Well, it's certainly worthy of a discussion some night, Neil, that's for sure.
Okay. And I didn't mean to get on my, I, I apologize. I am now jumping down off of whatever. High horse or stepping stool that I might have been standing on. I apologize. That's something that gets me worked up and, uh, I'm done. But I agree with all of you folks. I also support Jen. And, uh, I guess I'd be interested if there's more conversation, whether or not we move forward. Or whether we're ready to move forward with support of her.
I would endorse moving forward in support of the request.
Agreed.
I, I, I'd like to move forward with it, I'd like to move forward with it and, but. Certainly, um, from my comments earlier, have some representation on their board and, um. And communication with this board to, um. Then we, you know, that, it's a good first steps to make some of these other lofty goals we have work. I think we have to start somewhere. This was a good meeting with the chamber. Um, we've had more communication recently than we've had in years. Which is just fantastic. So let's keep that going.
Sure, definitely.
Mr. Chair, I, I know we have a raised hand from a member of the audience who's also a member of the finance committee.
Neil, uh, did you hear, did you hear me on that?
Yes, I did. I'm sorry. Christine, uh, would you like to speak, please?
Yes, thank you. This is Christine Cass, uh, eight Maple Street. I am on the finance committee. And I've been working closely with Jen on her budget over the last several months. And I just wanted to report that the finance committee met with Jen last week. And she discussed her budget in detail with the finance committee and we unanimously supported her budget. And are, are here to support her in any way that she needs.
Christine, thank you very much. Um, Warren, uh, every once in a while I see your name pop up. I, I don't want to leave you out. Is there anything that you, uh, would like to say on this issue?
No, I'm in support of it, but my phone is acting weird. I'm getting this weird stuff, I don't know. But I'm in support of this, who I'm, I'm very pleased that we, we spent extra time working on this and, and extra people working on. Together with the selectmen with the, with the board and I'm supportive of the new budget.
And, and Mr. Chair, if I may, um, uh, just speaking, uh, uh, on, on behalf of, of the various town entities. There's, there's a lot, there's a lot that goes on, uh, behind the scenes, uh, between, uh, the, the chamber and, and, and the town. The, the, the DPW, the, the library, the community center, the cultural district, the, uh, the, the cultural council. Just, just to, to name a few, there's a lot of, uh, unnamed folks who are working behind the scenes. The, the, the finance committee has been participating in a lot of the deliberations. So, uh, uh, it's, uh, it, it truly is a, a, a team effort. Uh, in a lot of these events that you, that you see happening around town. If, if, are the results of months and months of effort. So I wanted to, uh, acknowledge, uh, uh, that as part of this discussion. On, on behalf of the, the various, uh, town government entities that are already fully engaged. Uh, in trying to make for a, a, as positive a work environment or an economic environment as, as we can have in the midst of this pandemic.
Well, thank you, Chris. Um, I have heard nothing except positive comments in relation to this proposal and proposed budget. I too am in favor of it and support it wholeheartedly. So, uh, do we need a motion or anything like that? Or are we just going to, uh, give Jen our wholehearted support?
So I think, I think it's fine. Um, you know, we can take his consensus because, uh, you know, what we're going to find it on, on the next agenda item is. Sort of, uh, uh, some additional discussion about when we can, when, when we can fi- finalize our, our, our budget. In advance of town meetings. So this, this is part of that, right? So.
Okay, well, let me suggest this. I know that you have discussions to, uh, bring to us in the next section of the, of the agenda. Both related to things that we don't know in the positive and the negative on the ledger. Having said that, I nonetheless feel that we can approve Jen's budget unanimously. And if any folk, any, any folks feel differently, please let me know. But I feel in light of what we're going to hear, what we're going to learn and how the town stands. That I have no problem approving the Chamber of Commerce budget as presented.
Well, if that's a motion, I second it.
Okay, want to make it a motion? Is that okay, Chris?
Fine with me, yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, Jen, good job. Thank you for your very, uh, detailed and hard work on this.
All right. Super. Okay, so the next agenda item, Mr. Chair, is the, uh, amorphously named budget discussion. I'm ha- happy to kick, kick that off, uh, if, if you'd like. So, so, um. So, uh, Chairman Maximilian and I, uh, so mov- moving forward, uh, there's, there, there's still quite a bit of, uh, of, of work to do. As it relates to, uh, coming to a, a, a final budget number. And I, I do want to recognize, uh, uh, finance committee members. Uh, Mini Moran and Christine Cass, who are, who are here with us tonight. And who've certainly been putting a lot of work and effort every Thursday night for the last, uh, several weeks. The, the, the upshot of where we are right now, I think, is that everything hinges on, uh, on, uh, where the schools wind up. At their, their budget meeting on, on, on April fifth. Uh, at their meeting earlier this week. They had their, their annual budget hearing and, uh, that time it was, uh, moved and, and, and approved to postpone the budget vote. To, uh, to their meeting on April fifth. And the discussion that, that preceded that, that vote, um, uh, was, uh, a, a response to a, a memo. From the two finance committee liaisons to the, uh, to, to the school committee as well as a, a, a meeting that, uh, Chairman. Uh, Maximilian and I had with, uh, with a couple of members of the school committee as well as Dr. Cameron. And, uh, and Melissa Falkowski, the, uh, the business manager. And, uh, you know, it was, it was, uh, it was lots of great data presented by the, uh, the FinCon members and, and our. Positive discussion. I think the reaction that, that we saw from the school committee, uh, on, on Monday night. Uh, i- indicates that they're intending on, on putting some additional work into. Get, getting down to the, uh, three percent, uh, target, um, that, that we had originally set for them. You know, currently they're about two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars off that target. And in, in the, the next, uh, week and a half work of, worth of work is really going to tell the story. A- as to where this, this budget finally lands. So, I mean, I mean, I'm anticipating at, at, at our next meeting. We'll, we'll have a, uh, a, a, a meaningful decision to make. Um, you know, we, we made a small decision here tonight. But the, uh, the, the, the budget really hinges, uh, in, in terms of its size, uh, on, uh, what the schools do.
That's true.
I, I, I don't know if, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you want to add, uh, to, to that, and if I've, certainly if I've misstated anything. I, I hope you'll, you'll take the opportunity to correct me.
Well, Chris, I think you've done a very good job of summarizing. How do I, where do I start? Chris and I spent two hours with them. Close to that. And, um. You know, there's. There's look at the budget from the standpoint of dollars and cents and things that you need, things that you have to do, things that department chairs say, oh my God, I can't live without. And there's an alternative perspective, which in this pandemic year, I tried to highlight, which is. I think town should work together and play ball together and. Everybody be, uh, locked arms and do their best to make things work. And I don't know whether ultimately come out. I really don't. I think that they understand. The positions presented. I think that they understand that. And I could be wrong and please, any of you four, tell me if I'm wrong. But I think they understood. That it might be a good look. If during a difficult time, when Chris, correct me if I'm wrong. We laid off fourteen full-time equivalent employees to survive the pandemic. That school will not come in dramatically above their targeted budget. That's a message I tried to convey and I think they understood that. Now. If I'm off target and making sure there's enough. Books, pencils, curriculum, everything absolutely has to be done. Then I'm willing to step down, you know, not step down, excuse me, you know, back off my position. But I thought a better effort was deserved by the town. And all the folks that really tightened their belts. And that's the message I tried to convey. Uh, I guess I'll stop there, Chris. Thank you.
So, uh, I don't, I don't have a, any, any comment other than, uh, you know, we continue to monitor the other, the other elements of, uh, of. Of the, of the budget that are, that are happening outside of the, the, the town's control, whether it's state aid or, or revenue projections. There's nothing compelling being presented to us that would suggest we move off of any of those, uh. Any of those estimates in, especially those that, that are related to our recurring resources. Ms. Mrs. Smiths, uh, made note earlier that there is, um, you know, the prospect, uh, while not fully defined. Prospect of substantial federal support coming. However, that's a- as, as the five selectmen here know. And, and certainly the, the two finance committee members on, on this meeting know, uh, those, those revenues are going to be one time in nature. And, you know, there's going to be some cautious discipline needed to ensure that we don't make long-term commitments with short-term, uh, uh, financial resources. So, uh, we're, we're certainly not looking at digging ourselves a, a hole because of, uh, because of, of, of what we anticipate will be a one-time windfall. Uh, so structural, uh, balance is, is a key element to how we want to plan our budget, uh, which we're going to have to, uh, do in the next several weeks.
Well, I, I'll step in and say that I, I appreciate Neil and his candor and I certainly agree with his comments. And, uh, it has been, it has been a difficult year. We've all bitten the bullet. So I think we, we have to recognize that, continue with that, with that train of thought.
I concur.
Yeah, I agree with that. I agree with you, Neil.
Thank you.
I agree too.
Those are not easy words to deliver when you're talking about education, but. I think we're all in this together.
Agreed. A lot of people forget that sometimes.
I, it is the essence of community. So, great. All right. So, uh, I, I mean, I think we can answer any questions that folks might have about, uh, the budget. You know, the, the, the budget, but I think it really all comes down to the next week and a half. What happens in the next week and a half will determine the, the, the future. So, uh, uh, unless folks want to discuss that more, uh, Neil, Neil and I can go on and talk about, uh, uh, COVID and, um, and, uh, outdoor dining.
Yeah.
Do that.
Agreed.
Okay. So, um, I think, um, you know, when, when Neil and I were talking before the, the meeting, uh. Combining these last two agenda items seemed appropriate, um, since they, they, one, one seems to follow the other. We, uh, you know, I, I know I've spoken to, to several of you, um, over the, the course of the last month or so. And, and certainly, uh, our, our businesses are, are, are curious about, um, you know. What the town's plans are relative to what we did, uh, last summer. And, uh, after talking with, uh. Several members of the board as well as Superintendent Gop from our, our Department of Public Works, Director Miller, uh, Chief. Fire Chief O'Brien, Police Chief O'Brien. We're, we're, we're thinking about setting some parameters, uh, last year that are, that are somewhat different. Uh, from what we had in, in, in place for, uh, ou- outside dining last year. Recognizing, I think, that we're anticipating a, a, a busier, uh, season with the governor having, uh. Ease travel restrictions as well as, uh, uh, having, uh, eased some of the, uh, capacity limitations. Uh, we think there's going to be more people in, in town. Uh, many, many people have, uh, been vaccinated. So, uh, they're starting to, uh, take advantage of, of maybe some additional sense of, uh, of security. Around getting out more and, and, and traveling more perhaps. So with, with that in mind, we're, we're expecting more traffic and, and, and things of that nature. So, uh, you know, we're, in terms of recommendations coming from, from staff as well as reacting to some feedback that I've heard from. Uh, from the several restaurants and businesses, I think, uh, looking at, at keeping, uh, the, uh, the. Uh from the several restaurants and businesses, I think uh looking at at keeping uh the uh the um. The 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 parking space is clear uh from a public safety perspective, I think is going to be important. Uh as well as uh. Uh keeping folks uh four four feet off the curb. Um all all throughout our commercial district uh is going to be important in terms of safety. Um eh keep keeping alcohol to only the designated areas that 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 we saw uh last last summer. Um for that that uh six months of special dispensation that the bylaw was changed so that the board could accommodate. Um and as as well as uh. Uh yeah, making sure that we're not impeding any means of egress from any public buildings. Those would be the four key. Recommendations that that came from from staff uh in incorporating some feedback that we've uh received from folks. So I think. Uh that that that's where the staff is on it. I think it still warrants some. Additional discussion, obviously, from the board. It's the first time we've really put some meat on the bone for you to uh to respond to. Um and then, you know, print printing uh i- in laying this out all in black and white. Uh subsequent to your feedback, I think it would be the uh the next step at this point.
So it was it was good to walk around town. Um we we did a little walk around to see, you know, just how. Things might look. Um and I think it is really important, as as Chris and the public safety folks said that. We had a lot of help last year with the barriers, et cetera. But we were very lucky because there were very few people in cars, you know, in town because everyone was really trying to. You know, keep a low profile, and uh we've got a lot of people who've been vaccinated. And a lot of people who are going to be out and about that weren't out and about last year. Um and so I think that safety is paramount. Um for everyone. So uh I would definitely want. To follow what public safety has recommended as well as DPW and um. You know, the barriers were and were a good idea last year, but I don't think that we need to go in that direction again. If we can just keep the dining. You know, close up to. The restaurants so that there is that four-foot space to travel on the sidewalks um for outdoor dining. A lot of people have shifted, so we know Brava doesn't have that smaller space on Housatonic Street anymore. They've moved down to Church Street. Um so they've got a lot more space, and I think people are adjusting, which is terrific. So that's my comment.
I, you know, I I couldn't agree more with Mary Beth, you know, I last year we do what we had to do. It was quick. We tried some things. Looking back, I think um maybe we took a couple of chances. And thankfully, thank God, nothing happened. But yeah, safety is an important thing, you know, and you get people. More traffic around town, you know, somebody just hits the gas pedal wrong. It can be disastrous if we uh. You know, for right on the roadway. So, you know, we gotta do that four-foot thing. We gotta. We gotta about to think about safety all the time, and the restaurants are going to be able to have more people in them this year than they did last year. So. Um you know, it's not as big a hit. It's a hit, but it's not as big. So. You know, we have to, we have to keep all those things in mind. But you know, we we use a little risk management last year. And I think we uh gotta ratchet that back a little bit now.
So I I certainly agree with Mary Beth and Ed said. I mean, last year we were in a crisis. We shot from the hip and it worked out. Uh this year, we're going to be, I I hope we anyway, we're going to be deluged or we're bringing it back up to our normal. Capacity of our of of guests. So. We need, we we have, we need to protect those guests, and we need to protect the town people. So, yeah, I I agree. We gotta dial back.
I guess I'll jump in here. Um I don't disagree with any of the three of you. Uh those are all wise comments. Um I'm not saying throw all the barriers back out there. But knowing the behavior of cars, God forbid, the behavior of cars that are driven by someone not in control. For whatever reason, or, you know. It it doesn't matter that it's a tiny little town and you're driving twenty miles an hour. If you're an ebriated or under the influence of drugs, or they're just, you know, not. Paying attention. They can still create a lot of damage. You know, in a very small space. And so I'm not saying bring all the barriers back. But I'd like a evaluation of barriers at corners or barriers at key spots. Or something like that, or even if we drive steel posts or something like that, that like takes up a lot less space to the restaurant. And uh, you know, allows, you know, plenty of dining room, but let's. I I don't know, let's let's just keep it safe is is my, I you know, one accident would be, you know, just uh tragic. And so I I still want to think about the safety of it.
Now, last year, we uh we had a few tents up, and um we were lucky enough to have the cooperation of. Uh some landowners. I'm thinking Nate Win Stanley. We were able to put up a tent on the on his property at the corner of Main Street. And um church. Um so that was really nice because that provided a little more outdoor dining space. Uh we we. Re-jiggered that parking lot between um the two buildings on Church Street, uh the one that houses um. Noodle and the other one that has the uh art gallery. The wit, the wit gallery, thank you. So that was nice. We had a little bit of cover there, and we had seating available and. Um we had picnic tables in various areas, and I think it would be really nice to be able to still provide that this summer. It lent a wonderful um ambiance to the town, and it made it feel. Really terrific, and I hope we can do that again. And I know DPW was instrumental in that as well as. Um you know, police and the sheriff's department in helping us get that together. But um you know, perhaps we can. Get a few tents and make that happen again. That was really lovely. So that could give us some cover for inclement weather. Which would be really terrific. I'd like to consider that again.
I like what you have to say, Mary Beth. You know, at risk of. I don't know the politics, okay? So but there are. Let's say off-site areas, not directly in town. Where people can park. Um they may be close to parks, they may be close to cemeteries, blah blah blah. Probably all can envision them. I don't want to name them. And what if there were tents there, protected tents there? And almost like valet style parking where we used, you know, center school, which has tons of extra spots. Or something like that. Uh as a a form of employment for, you know, young. Men and women in town and B as something as a revenue source for center school. And C, a productive use of those parking areas. Um at off-hours. Now, I know that some of those parking areas are considered immutably. You know, belonging to who they belong to, and no one can touch them, et cetera, but. You know, we're not in normal times, so flexible thinking is still necessary.
Yeah, never let a good crisis go to waste.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, in particular, I don't, forgive me for not knowing what it's called, but there's a parking area next to that little softball. Uh play play ball uh. Park, you know, as you go out Housatonic, that's near the um.
Yeah, orbed. Orbed, right.
Orbed, yeah, thank you.
If if I may chime in?
Yes, I I just noticed that uh that Jennifer had her had her hand raised. I apologize.
That's okay. I was waiting for everyone to um for the board to speak. Um couple of things. One is Neil, I think that's a great idea. And BUTI is not, they're not going to be in person this year. They have that huge lot, and it's only a quarter mile down the road. We have used that before for other events. I can't remember. Maybe it was Apple Squeeze. Couple of years ago, but that's, I mean, having paid parking there, five bucks, the debt, you know, for whatever, that's that's, and they can get. I think they can get five hundred, five hundred cars in there, maybe three hundred cars in there. But that's, you know, a great, you know, great spot. But I will say that I've spoken to all of the restaurants um that are chamber members. And they had all, they all would like to have outdoor space at Alta. Would like to do what they did last year. Now, they're a little bit easier because their their parking spot was blocked off. There was like, they put in a ramp. Um. Um Frankie's, but she didn't, she was on the grass, so she's not a problem prime. Um, I'm trying to think who else. Um I'm not sure about shots. I know that that Brava, he's not going to be doing anything in that. Location on Housatonic Street this year, but they're all under the impression that the bylaw, the bylaw change was. Um not temporary, that they thought that that was permanent. But I said that, I said that I was going to um. That it that at some point I would be discussing it with the select board, but I did speak, I Bill Gop and I did speak, and we are gonna. Put the dining terrace back up in that parking lot across from Alta, because we use that for the Lettuce Love Music also, and that was just. A slam dunk, and I think the owners of that lot, Jonathan Mulk and um Bob Romeo are totally amenable to that. They liked it. You know, it's almost better than having cars, you know, going in and out of that parking lot. Um you know, that creates. Danger there with people walking through and trying to like another cars coming into Church Street. But um. That's just, I just wanted to, you know, put that out there, the expectations of the restaurants and some of the shops. I know that. Some of the shops had set up tents in the parking spots, and you know, my response was, we're gonna need the parking this year, the spot. And um and and aesthetically, you know, the orange barricades are not. You know, I mean, that you know, Bill, Bill and I talked about that. He would want to do something else, but then we, you know, talked about, we were, we were waiting for your cue. For the, from the the select board's queue as to, you know, if we were going to even use those parking spots again. So, you know. Um when when you all decide what you want to do, um I will communicate that to all the businesses. And then um, you know, whatever the process will be for being able to to do stuff on the sidewalk or, you know, whatever. So.
Yeah, I don't know what the proper way of dealing with the bylaw is. If that's something we need to, we need to discuss with the with the. Planning board and the zoning board of appeals, or if it's something that we can do as a board ourselves. So I'm good for the town manager.
Sure, yeah. I mean, the per- the purpose of the the bylaw change that was made at the uh at the special town meeting, that the. We'll we'll all recall the drive-in town meeting in uh at the at the middle high school. Is us to to facilitate the ease of permitting for for outdoor dining. So uh pre- previous to that. We had almost cost prohibitive uh insurance components uh to uh to our outdoor dining provisions. Um as well as uh the the inability uh for the Board of Selectmen to grant temporary relief. Um for uh for uh alcohol, all alcohol license uh permits uh for consumption on. On on town-owned property adjacent to businesses. Those those barriers were removed as a result of that bylaw change, but. There's uh, you know, there's, there's a six-month window. So as I I think the discussion before, you know, while it's, it's, it's. It's it it's not permanent. It is periodically uh renewable, but it it'll be. Uh by the parameters that the that the board uh sets. So the 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 board's been have been granted the the ability to ease restrictions. Uh according to the rules that that they determined to be in the in the best interest of the town. And so that's a permanent amendment to the bylaw for uh periodic short durations of no more than six months. Uh under a specified set of circumstances that they decide.
Could it be on a case-by-case basis, uh depending on where a a restaurant's located? So say for Alta, they have the space. Because they moved their tables to the parking uh to the, like, the sidewalk in front of Lansbury Mule and Realty. So uh uh you know, like I said, that was, that parking space was built up, which, you know, Bill said he could take out if he needs.
Jen, if if I may, this this really isn't the right forum for us to go through. Individual locations.
Yeah, right.
Um spaces. I mean, I think the message Chris relayed to you is clear. Uh. If you're. If your constituents, if your restaurants are viewing it as a permanent. Uh benefit that they've not gained from the town, that would be in error. We are doing everything we can through this conversation and future conversations to extend that benefit. And we want to because we we value our restaurants.
Mm-hmm.
Please understand the difference between the restaurants thinking that they automatically, immutably have. A benefit that they will have for forever and. The fact that we are trying our best in this discussion and future discussions to keep giving them that benefit.
Mm-hmm.
We want to, okay? We are talking about, as I've heard tonight. Maybe making the benefit even better, maybe less uh onerous barriers. And maybe only some, but safety is a very particularly important thing to us. So we're not going to sacrifice that. Okay, but I think uh a discussion of individual entities and whether they are or they aren't, you know. Covered going forward is not subject for tonight's discussion if if you would, if you would allow me that.
Yeah, no, I I understand that. I was just, I was just trying to understand. I mean, I'm with you on safety, absolutely. And if the sidewalks. Are going to be full, which we want, um you know, I just, I'm just trying to understand. You know, four feet and I I'm just trying to picture it, that's all. I didn't, I didn't mean to like.
We 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 understand, we know. Your restaurants want to know today. Whether or not they've got exactly the same thing as last year or not, or bigger or less. And we are under the gun to try to help make those decisions, and we understand those decisions are important. Because your restaurants or the restaurants are very important to us. And so we will do what we can. To make that as fast of a decision-making process as possible, but I'm not prepared tonight to tell anybody. You know, how many exact spots do they have? Does that make sense?
Right. Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, but we're on the same page because we we all value each other.
Yeah, no, I abso- I see that, absolutely. No, I'll wait until I hear from Chris to, you know, move forward.
And we will not delay, I promise.
Uh just a thought from Warren. And the public safety issue is one I think we pushed pretty hard last year. And I I I think we need to have the police department and the DPW involved in each one of these decisions. And to make a a better decision, and I think so, one safer than last year. So. I agree with everybody on this. Safety is the big issue.
And and to and to be to be fair to everyone in this conversation, I think it it's something that uh that that staff owes the board to be uh reduced to writing. So there's no ambiguity.
Yes.
Warren, I appreciate your point a hundred percent. Thank you.
So I mean, to, if I if I may, I mean, to weave in the uh the the townwide covid nineteen uh. Uh uh updated to this since, you know, it's 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 all sort of related. I I just want to say as town manager that. You know, our our public safety uh. Uh personnel and our uh 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 really, really all town personnel, but. Public safety uh in particular has managed itself amazingly, I think, this entire time. I mean, there's been no transmission. Uh among personnel, uh di- despite many exposures to uh potentially, uh you know. Dangerous and concerning uh uh si- situations, as is the the nature of their job from from day to day. And I think to a to a lesser extent, but uh to a, you know, a no less serious extent, you could say that about. Uh Public Works uh li- library and and community center personnel who've been uh, you know, performing and open to the public. Uh as as well and and dealing out in the in the public. So uh I I I I just want to, you know, commend. So folks for. As, as well and, and dealing out in the, in the public. So, uh, I, 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 I just want to, you know, commend, uh, so folks for, uh, you know. You know, foregoing vacations and, and, you know, dedication to the job. And, uh, we're, we're certainly not letting our guard down. By, by any means or declaring victory. But in fact, just the opposite, the, the preceding discussion is, is indicative of the fact that we're. We're preparing for, for an influx of people this, this summer. And it's something we take very seriously.
Chris, you and the rest of the public safety folks and everybody involved, yours deserve praise for that. And I thank you.
We're, we're very appreciative to, uh, be, uh, supported by this board.
Okay. Uh, as you know, I am at a disadvantage without an agenda in front of me because that's on my phone.
That, that was the last, uh, that was the last item, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And my phone is also telling me it's just about out of battery. So. Does, does anybody have a pressing, uh, liaison report that they'd like to, to share?
No.
Nothing.
Nope, nope.
Listen, this is a longer than usual meeting. I apologize for that. But I think a lot of, uh, a lot of significant things were discussed. And I really appreciate your time. So with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you, folks. Stay safe, stay dry. It's raining outside now, but do your best.
All right.